We didn't add it, we didn't save it, we didn't put it there. You know, it was there and reuse.
All done, Chris?
I'm done, I'm done ranting.
We're a half hour over that. Thank you so much.
Keep working hard.
So you'll adjourn this, Doug? You'll adjourn this because there's a joint meeting and then we'll go into your business meeting.
Second. And Chris will need to say yes verbally if she's in the panel.
Yep, Chris?
I agree to adjoint the joint meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Next is our meeting. And if you've already done.
Pledge of allegiance.
So next is approval of the minutes for the last meeting.
Can I move we approve the minutes?
Second.
If I might, I would, next to Kent's name here, I'd write that he arrived at six ten or six oh five, I can't remember because he didn't vote on the minutes. So he was, we just want to amend that.
Will we approve without amendment?
Second. Thank you. And next is Mark asked Chris to probably do it.
Do you want to vote on the minutes, Chris?
Um, I listened to the meeting, I read the minutes, so I, I guess I can.
You, you weren't officially an attendee though, were you?
No, I was not.
You want to abstain?
I'll abstain.
Okay.
So then on to department reports and Chief Ferland, would you like to?
I think you all have the able one for you to. Well, Angel, we had a total of three hundred and fourteen complaints. Eighty-six dispatch complaints, four hundred and eighteen self-missioned. Had a total of six arrests in the month of April. Top end of major concern. Second thing I want to bring up, we've had a cruiser down for going on seven weeks now. The warranty, warranty issued by Ford and they can't get the parts for it, so it's sitting over there and the gas there at court waiting for a flywheel to come in. They can't get it, so. We're, we're at a stalemate on that and just waiting for a flywheel to come over. We now have a, a drug drop-off box at police station in the lobby. My contractor within Mar, it's the DEA, they sent us the box, no cost to the town. And drugs, uh, boxes filled. Called FedEx, FedEx picks it up at Inmars expense and does away with the drugs, so. They sent us two boxes ahead, when they get the first one, they'll send us two more, so. And it's all prepaid, FedEx picks it up. When I did the drug take back down in town, Doc, we actually collected twenty-eight pounds of scripts and drugs that were dropped off to me down there for the day. We had firearms qualifications this week, everything went well, we had the new rifles, everybody qualified with new rifles. And they were wonderful, appreciate it. Last thing I have is Memorial Day. United bikers are going to be coming, they're going to bike around the town. It's only then we're going to get rented assistance and doing that, but we're going to need to block off a couple of roads or five minutes at a time, highway passing, there's some objections. Other than that, that's what I have. How many motorcycles, Nick? They're expecting anywhere between seventy-five and a hundred and twenty-five. So there, they're starting at. Down at the Harley station down in Lewiston, coming up point twenty-six. Heading up South Monmouth Road to one thirty-five and out to one thirty-two and out to two oh two and heading back to the big city.
It wouldn't interfere with the, what, what we're doing, the parade and stuff like?
Yeah, this is a, it's going to be an afternoon run, so. Well, it's not down Main Street anyway, so. Well, we're going to come down to Main Street down. Oh, I thought you said it was. Coming up South Monmouth, one thirty-two and then out to two oh two.
The information that I take from your report and I, I put it in the community advocacy, is that, am I doing something wrong or too much or too little or?
No, um, if you need more information, I can, I can extrapolate more information from the system. What you have put out there is on public record.
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, I, as long as I'm not doing something else.
No, no, this is all public. Okay, if it wasn't public record, he couldn't share it with us in open meetings.
I know, but I mean, I was just squirming.
Thank you. Don't rush me tomorrow, don't worry.
Corrected me and saying, you're going to do that. Anyway, so next is Public Works Director.
Public Works, yes. Scott Logerty, who was, where he put in his resignation, worked his final day last Thursday, he's still gone to a field that he previously worked in for roughly eighteen years. He just really didn't want to be laying under a truck at his age and working a hundred hours, he wanted to get back to his other. Followings, so that puts us to October fourth, including myself. So if there was any doubt that I wasn't a working director before, I will be a working director now for the rest of the summer, no questions asked, and I'm glad to do it. We will be putting out hiring notices, probably early next week, start posting positions. Just being honest, talking to Justin, working in the labor market, I think this one I hope to have staff on time or so. But what we're doing, we're hard and we're behind, we're going to be behind all summer, but we're going to make a, about an effort at it. To that end, a lot of calls on Sandblond Road and the condition of it. It will be addressed extensively on Monday and it will be temporarily, temporarily addressed tomorrow. I saw another gentleman, they're going to go out and try and hit the worst spots and get them passable until we can get there Monday with a full crew and a lot of patch, so. That's about what's going on at the moment, questions, thoughts?
I saw the report from the dam inspector. Yes, and.
I'm act, I'm actually on.
Oh, I didn't say Dan Roy, I said the dam inspector.
The dam.
Oh.
Rock the dam, rock the dam fire tree.
Dan, the fire inspector. Go ahead.
I wanted to make a, a compliment on the public record for the person who it is that noticed the problem with the dam before it became a disaster with the dam. And I understand that that is you. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And where do we stand with that? I, I did receive the copy of the report, it was very.
So, so we were out there today with, with the engineer that we were going to retain to do the inspections, but we just kind of accelerated it and told them, can you get over here and look at the dam for us? So he was down there today and shut the, the gate so that they could see what it, what it looked like. It, it's clear that water is still going downstream even when the gate's closed, you can see it moving. We saw a very nice brook trout in there, we stopped it.
You shouldn't say that on public record. It's not going to be there for long.
It might not be there because Dan saw it already. They, they have some ideas, they think we need to do some borings in front of it, but they are going to start coordinating with the dam inspector and watershed people. So when it gets down to the foot and a half, when the dam inspector comes back, our engineer is going to come back at the same time so they can all look at the same thing together and they're going to try to formulate a plan. When, when the water level gets down to a foot and a half, the state dam inspector is going to decide whether he feels it should be dropped to the full three and a half feet or whether the foot and a half is enough. So we're kind of playing it by ear, they're trying to keep as much water in there as possible, but obviously they have to do what's, you know, the right thing for safety, so. So that's where we are.
Just for the record, what's the dam height, what's the full pool height on the dam?
I don't know, I've been, I've been told it recently, but I didn't retain it.
I just read the report, I'm pretty sure it's in ninety.
Did it, okay.
Doesn't say, no, pretty sure the total head is ninety.
Seems logical based on how deep the sink was.
But, but I, I don't, I'm not the expert here, I'm just reading the report.
Well, someone asked me the other day and I thought it was somewhere between nine and twelve feet, so.
It's also notable that there, I mean, I, again, we don't know until the engineers tell us exactly how to fix it right, but the, the dam is not showing cracks, that this is a, a seep ditch that goes underneath the dam.
It appears to be.
Yes, seep, seep ditch is the word the engineers.
Yeah.
Chris has her hand up.
She what?
Chris wants to speak.
Okay.
Chris, go ahead.
Um, just a question, have we put up the free table at the dump or do we have plans for that?
At, at this point, we do not have plans for that.
So my concern is if we're worried about tipping fees and we've had a lot more stuff to tip, then if we don't have stuff being set out there that is perfectly fine and doesn't need to get thrown out, doesn't that somehow add to the tipping fees? And if we always had, you know, I mean, for the past twenty years, I think, at a free table, if we somehow figure out how to make that happen?
If the, if the materials are not picked up, then they've been dumped for free. And our, our, our insurance carrier frowns on this practice. I mean, obviously we can do whatever we want, but MMA doesn't like those things up there, they don't feel that it's a municipal service and that it's a, it's just a risk, I guess, that, that they don't like having people in transfer stations that aren't doing transfer station activities, just more chance for someone to get hurt, I guess, backed over or whatever. I don't know their exact reasoning, but they don't particularly like us doing this.
Ever happen in the past twenty years?
I don't know, but o- over the past twenty years, fewer and fewer towns have these things operating anymore. They used to be a very large one in Litchfield, I know, because my parents lived there. And there used to be four old men that kind of managed the garage and they would tell people not to put certain things in there that they felt were junk. And when those old men didn't want to do it anymore, they shut the garage up because they didn't want the public works or the transfer station crew having to manage it. So I think it, it's a conversation we can all have, obviously, if you want to.
They, they now have volunteers.
Okay, they have people back again, okay.
Volunteers.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So they, they have them free, they give them free space and it's a swap, you know, like a swap shop. And I, actually, I, I got to tell you, I'm of the opinion, while we're on this topic, that whatever we can do to reuse and recycle things saves us money. I mean, it's a no-brainer that someone who can repurpose something that would otherwise go in, in the demo bin or the trash bin. We're creating value for the town and then we're also creating value for townspeople who are there. So I, I, I hear you that MMA is skeptical. It's a head scratcher to me why that is, but it seems like we need to find a way to make that work.
We need someone to manage it or the transfer station workers have to manage it. They have to make sure that people aren't throwing things there that someone's trying to avoid paying for. And that does happen, people will, people will throw old TVs and things that they might have a fee up for or whatever and they leave it there and if there isn't someone to keep an eye on it, it can be abused. So if we could find a way to manage it, that would be.
I understand your point, and I agree with it, but what costs more money is somebody dealing with the free tent? And then somebody puts, I have to pick up a little fresh tree, wood in the demo bin, that's a pay, because you deal with the free tent, so. If there's people that want to step up and volunteer to manage, that would be an option, but I need, I need to control costs by controlling where things are actually dumped, not what's put in the free tent. My, I'm going to lose more money by not watching the other people than, than I am saving by certain things being.
Okay.
That's my stance on it.
How about this, can we put our efforts, if, 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 if you're concerned about the labor involved with managing it, can we put our efforts into putting the word out that we're looking for a volunteer or group of volunteers who might be interested, like Litchfield, in coordinating this on their own time?
Nobody's approached me yet, that's certainly.
Well, I mean, I, I would, can we, can we put it on our Facebook page and just put a request out there that would, because I've got some feedback from more than one constituent saying, look, we used to do this all the time. This is not rocket science and it saves people money.
I also know at the end of the year, last year, I, you know, built my loader bucket three times and being out of ten.
Yeah.
Stuff that nobody took before I took the tent down, so there was a fair amount, it all went in the demo bin, which cost us the most money.
Sure.
So that's, you know, that's something, but it's, you know, only three transportation attendants employees and they can't honor it twenty-four seven and people like Justin said, you, you know, you walk into it, I'm like, what is this doing here? This is, you know, but when he's over there making sure that the proper wood's going into that pile and this, that pile of tires and singles, they unload their truck into the tent, so it's, it's going up, it's going to have to be stacked and not just stacked spread, it's going to have to be stacked. And I can't go by guys to the girls.
Okay, I'll see if we can figure something out.
Oh, Chris would like to speak again, right, Chris? Or is your hand still up from last time?
It's still up from last time.
Okay, I can, I can lower it for you. Dan, did you want to do a report?
Yeah, if you can hear me. Damn, damn. So, yeah, I apologize for missing the meeting again, just currently traveling, but I'm pulled over at a rest stop in the Bangor area, so I'm just listening in and then I'm going to head south. So real quickly, the fire department, we've actually, we just found out this morning that we lost one of our, our members. Jimmy Price passed away earlier this morning, so the fire department's in mourning, so I just want to make a public announcement. His wife, Rachel Price, gave me permission to make the formal announcement, so. We just want to say rest in peace, Jimmy, you know, we enjoyed several years of service that he provided and he was recently assigned to Tank eighty-five and most recently as a support member of the department. And a few months ago, we celebrated his eightieth birthday, so hopefully he's resting in peace now and no longer suffering. There will be a fire department service next Thursday at one PM at the North Monmouth Community Church, so Fire Department will be putting on a fire service with full honors in, in, in his honor, so just want to make that announcement. Fire Department's been pretty busy lately, probably my fault for saying it's been relatively quiet in recent weeks, but it's picked up and nothing major, we've had a few small grass fires and we had a bad three-car crash, fortunately no serious injuries on two oh two recently, and then yesterday we had a close call over at Clemento Farm with a small fire that was quickly contained and extinguished before it got out of control, so good news for a fast response over there. So great job to Monmouth Fire for that. And then the last thing I have is just put out another reminder about Monmouth, I'm sorry, about Memorial Day, it's going to be Monday, May, May thirtieth. Correction on the breakfast times, the auxiliary is going to be doing it from seven to nine thirty, and again, veterans eat for free. We had to go, we had to go up a little bit on our costs, it's going to be ten dollars per person, I think five dollars for children twelve and under. As you guys know, inflation has increased, so, so, so did our prices to help cover the cost of the meals. The American Legion will be doing a service, I believe it's at nine thirty at the North Monmouth Community. And then again, another one at the, at the conclusion of the eleven o'clock parade in Monmouth Center, so. We'll have a parade downtown right at eleven o'clock and staging for anybody that wants to march will be at ten thirty at Comston Hall. And then we're going to be staging apparatus at the same timeframe at the town office parking lot and then we'll file in just before eleven o'clock to lead the procession down through downtown right at eleven o'clock from Comston Hall. Just want to extend invitation to Monmouth PD as well as Public Works, you guys in the past have, have either led the procession with a police cruiser or participated, if you have a, a truck available, Dan, for Public Works, one or two trucks, that would be great, like to have you guys and we'll send an invitation out to a few of our mutually fire departments as well, as well as one through the ambulance service. That's pretty much all I got, and then I, I did hear Chief Ferland mention about the bikers that afternoon, so just let us know if you need any assistance with road closures and I'll see if I can.
I, I'm definitely going to need your assistance with that, Chief.
Okay, yep, we, we can touch base, you know, that day, that morning if you'd like, or just let me know ahead of time.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be in touch right before then, so we'll get on the safety unit.
Okay, that's all I have unless you guys have any questions.
Okay, all said, Dan, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I know, I was just going to talk about the dam a little bit, we already did that, o- other than that, you can see the works moving ahead on Maple Street down there. I can't think, is there, is there anything else that you want to know, but I'm trying to think.
Could you give us an update on the Main Street sidewalk, timing, project?
It, it's probably going to be like twenty twenty-four before there's any shuffles in the ground.
Okay, and that's because we're sort of coordinating with DOT?
It's not only that, but they, they don't get their allotment from the state, which basically means they can't put any staff members, like actually on the project until I think July first. So that would be when they could start doing preliminary design work. So we think, it, it's just kind of the timeframe, we're going to roll into the next winter and the next summer would probably be the, the public meetings about what we want and then with partnership agreement, we've got to come up with our own designs to integrate into their stuff about moving the utility poles and sidewalks, it's just kind of the timeframe that it will take. Yeah. That's what they thought anyway, they thought twenty twenty-four probably was the most likely, maybe fall of twenty-three, but they thought that might be pushing.
Is there, we, we're updating our comp plan?
Yes.
Is that in the works or?
They're meeting again next week, but they're kind of, they're kind of stuck because the KB cog doesn't have any staff, you know, they let, or, or the executive director left, I, I don't know under what circumstance, but the, the person who was working with, with us is now like their interim, so he obviously can't do anything. And they're down a couple of planners too, they, they just keep churning staff through that place, they're having a hard time keeping them there, I don't, I don't know the reasons for that. So they were trying to determine, the last I knew, they were trying to determine whether they should just put it off for a while and wait for KB cog to staff up or whether they thought that they should go hire somebody outside of KB cog or what they wanted to do. So the last I knew that they weren't sure, but I know, I think they have a meeting next week.
And this is not something that we are need to do because of grants or whatever.
We're supposed to have it done, so they, they, the only real, the, the state doesn't really have a stick, there's no comp plan police that come around and do anything, but like, if you apply for I think certain CDBG grants, things like that, there are, there are extra points if you have an updated comp plan, if you don't, you just kind of fall further down the list. My understanding is most of the stuff that we, we would get a benefit from or we would be hurt by doesn't really matter that much because Monmouth is kind of a, you know, the state looks at us as a wealthy town because of all the waterfront property, so some of that stuff, we can't apply for it anywhere. But there may be something that would kind of hang us up if we don't have it.
What you're saying is it's nice, but not a necessity.
Right, there are plenty of towns that have that comp plan that are out of compliance with, with the ten-year rule, so. They should get it done, but it's not the end of the world if it's, if it's too late.
What, what word? I've got a couple, we had a meeting of the Economic Development Committee this week and we should be expecting a recommendation to the select board at our next meeting, don't mind me forgetting, make sure you get it. For a survey for when voters come to the June fourteenth voting, would also be online. It's a survey about the Tiff District, we've been looking at some modifications to the Tiff District and we're looking to ask voters what their opinions are on what the priorities for the Tiff District ought to be, so. So that's in the works and we'll see that next, next meeting, just in time for the vote. Also, I was driving down the Wagon Road and came across some surveyors gathering around the Wagon Bridge. And I pulled over and I said, hey, what are you guys doing? You work for DOT? And they're like, yeah, we're doing the preliminary data collection for whatever happens to that bridge. Just thought that was no, maybe too high. That would be, that'd be nice.
Yeah.
I saw, I had an email today come through DOT specifically discussing the Wagon Road Bridge.
Yeah.
It's slated for summer twenty-four. There you go, didn't give any specifics, but can only imagine what it's been fully replaced.
So after I get that information, will those guys go back to work?
I had an initial Zoom meeting with DOT where I expressed that, you know, obviously that they, obviously two lanes would be nice, and they said they would like to do that too.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of whether they can fit it, I guess, or their, or what, what it costs, I guess is what it. You know, that goes.
My blue skies version of that particular bridge would be two lanes elevated high enough to get a canoe on the move and guardrails that might allow carrying and voting, but not allow for, I mean, and, and certainly allow snowmobiles access to the bridge, okay? Okay, you.
Would it be a sidewalk that they can fish off of?
We can ask.
Because, you know.
Yeah, there's a lot of activity that happens on the bridge, yes.
Is that one open to carrying?
Right now.
There's lots of people kayaking, a lot, a lot of girls.
Yeah. It's a don't ask, don't tell type of situation. So, so technically the surface use restriction is in place for that area, both sides of the bridge. The, the property owner right to the west, south, southwest of the bridge is allowing people around the surface use restriction. Just need to call him and let him know. Just need to call him and let him know. His phone number's on some signs down there. I also was able to get an acknowledgement from friends of the Cuffsey watershed that if we continue to have no invasive milk foil acceptable during the first couple of surveys that we do this year, that they will consider releasing the surface use restriction, which would then allow people to carry in boats. But it's a wait and see. We did, I, I don't know if you remember, we did the service site treatment two Septembers ago and it seems to have been very effective. There was nothing detected in that area last year. And before they released the S U R, they wanted to check it one more time. So we'll see.
The only thing I have is that I went to the, the RSU and their budget hearing for Monmouth. They do it, they do it for all towns in the RSU. And I was the only person there who was the, either a school board member or a member of staff. So they, they, the superintendent didn't do it. It was a PowerPoint. And, but the, and he did point out to me that the our, this, our, our contribution will be increasing by three point zero five percent. We're gonna be paying thirty-one point sixty-three percent of the total RSU budget. And the, also, there was a slide on approximate impact by town per one hundred thousand dollar loan valuation. And for Monmouth, it's one hundred dollars and seventy-five cents.
Per one hundred thousand.
Per one hundred thousand.
We paid thirty-one percent of the total, thirty-one?
We, we paid thirty-one point six three percent of the total RSU budget. So public comment?
What's happening with the schools that want to pull out, like Richmond?
I don't know.
That wasn't discussed?
No.
I had a meeting with the superintendent a while ago when he, when I first got here. He invited all the member town managers down to his office so we could just meet and greet. He said, he said Richmond is, is going. It's just a matter of when they can get the vote. The vote that they took last time wa- was overwhelming to leave, but they didn't have enough people vote in it. They have to, they have to hit a certain trigger based on the last gubernatorial election. And he said that if everybody who voted to stay, he said if everybody flipped their vote, they still would have lost. So if everybody who didn't, if the number of people that they needed added on all voted to stay, they still would win. So he's had conversations with them and for them, it doesn't have anything to do with money. They just want, uh, local control back. They don't, they know it's gonna cost their taxpayers more money and their, their townsfolk are fine with that. So it's just about having their own school board again. So they're gonna leave. Dresden is sort of half talking about it, but I think it's less likely because they just don't have anywhere else to go.
We, we really kind of need to get on track here. We're an hour off track, so.
Just want to make sure Justin's aware of the previous history here that we had similar vote. We didn't get through as we gubernatorial presented, like lost by twenty-two votes.
Yeah, okay.
It's a big, long process of very kind of complicated to go through. Anyway, so on to, to consider the policy for use of alcohol on certain town property.
So this was brought to you sort of as a concept, I think, several months ago. Dennis came down and he, he presented this and you kind of tentatively said, move ahead with a, with a policy. This is, this is what came out from, from the discussions with his trustees and then this went to the town council, the town attorney, and this is what came out of it. So this is for you to decide whether this is satisfactory to you. It passes muster with the town lawyer. And if you want to pass it, then we can do it.
The, it pertains to a property that's under the control of the Cuffston Hall trustees for this building and for the fairgrounds.
Yes.
I, I make a motion that we adopt the policy for use of alcohol on certain town property.
I'll second that.
So this is a motion by Ken, second by Chris to approve the policy for the alcohol use, alcohol use on certain town property. The only kind of alcohol is wine or a beer or, I guess. So anyway, all those in favor?
I accept.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Yes, sir. No.
No. It, it only.
Certain town properties, what's certain town property mean?
Certain town properties are fairgrounds and this building.
You know, but the town property is gonna be the old school eventually. So why would you include that?
Well, if I might be shamed.
So for a certain town property, needs to specifically identify the town property. So the ones that are specified in this policy are Cuffston Hall and the fairgrounds and that's it.
The other one could be added in future.
Yes.
Clarification, it's Cuffston.
Yes. Cuffston.
Okay.
On to consider an event and Tiff funding application for Monmouth Beach Party.
I, I included the application there. It's, it's for the beach party. They, they're, they're asking for three thousand dollars. I think that's what they were getting for, so.
Will we approve?
Second. So it's a motion by Harold, second by Ken to approve the Monmouth Beach Party Tiff funding application. All those in favor?
Chris?
Chris?
Vote in favor.
Is, yeah, one twenty-three.
All states construction, four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Almighty waste, school demolition, sixty-seven thousand one hundred and seven dollars. Blue Rock Earthworks, six thousand seven hundred and eighty. Central Main Power, three thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Dennis K Burke, no lead fuel, one thousand seventy-two. EcoMain Recycling, one thousand nine hundred and thirty-three. GDI Services, Anger Janitorial Services for the town buildings, two thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight. Criminal Industries, both waste demo debris, three thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars. Harris Computer Systems, this is our software we use in the town office, twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. Main Equalization Assessing, two thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Northeastern Firearms, firearms training ammunition and firearms cases, one thousand one hundred and fifty and six thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. EDQ Door, commercial door installation, twenty-five hundred. Treasure State Main for motor vehicles, ten thousand eight hundred and forty-four and five thousand four hundred and forty-one.
Will we approve the one?
So the motion by Harold, second by Ken to approve our number twenty-three. All those in favor?
Chris?
I approve.
Okay.
Thank you. Next is an executive session. So we went to MRS A four oh five, six G labor negotiations and then to take any resulting action.
Will we enter executive session?
Second. The motion by Harold, second by Ken to move into a.